Are we all set? Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting to order at 7:04. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming tonight. It is so wonderful to see so many people in the audience. Is there a motion to seal the executive session minutes from tonight?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. And tonight in executive session, we did vote to approve eight homeschooling requests, and that passed 5-0. At this time, it is now time for our showcase. So Dr. Cummings, would you like to do some introductions?
I sure would. So I am excited to introduce to you all members of, new members of our faculty. So all of them were selected after rigorous interview processes. So they are all all-stars. They've already had an impact on our schools. So I'm going to ask our principals to come up and introduce them. So why don't we start with our elementary school? So Lisa, if you could introduce our new faculty and staff? You can just bring her up with you. That'd be great.
And if the new staff come up, Ms. Wilson, if you can have them kind of face the camera for our wide viewing audience at home, position your staff numbers so everybody at home can see.
Absolutely. I'm very happy to introduce to you Jessica DeRiemer, who comes to us from Smithfield Schools. She's a native Narragansett resident. She taught for 26 years, and she's already brought a great deal of love of art in our school. I can't say enough. On Friday, we'll be celebrating DOT Day, where students have been at every grade level making varieties of different kind of DOT art. And we've added that to our School Spirit Day on Friday. So either you can wear dots or circles or anything DOT-related and/or our school spirit clothes on Friday. So she's already made a huge impact. If you take a walk through our hallway, you will see amazing artwork up by all grades. And she's even taken on making an annual morning message, a daily morning message, right as you walk in, welcoming the students with lots of positive encouragement for each day. So we are super happy to have her. She's hit the ground running, and I believe she's enjoying her time at Narragansett Elementary School. Welcome, Jessica.
Thank you.
And I also have a couple pair of professionals here. Not here, but I'd like to acknowledge them. We have Brianna Ristelli and Gelda Ristelli and Caterie Collins. They're not here tonight, but there are pair of professionals that have joined us to work in either kindergarten or preschool this year.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, I would like to welcome up Emily Chardier, our peer school principal, and who can introduce our peer school folks.
Thank you for having me. I'd like to introduce Jessica Rodriek. She's coming to us from North Kingstown. She has 12 years of experience in Grade Seven English Language Arts and wanted to get back to middle school, so this is an opportunity for her. She has a wonderful background in literature, which led her to further her education and move into a media specialist position in 2016 in North Kingstown. So when the opening came up, she saw it and wanted to get back to the middle school experience, so she is with us at peer. And she's already making impact in our Junior Mariner course, which is one of our new courses, and we're really excited to have her. So thank you, Jessica. I'd also like to mention some of our other new hires. We have Sean Horgan from Portsmouth, who is taking on Grade Five Band and Computer Science. We have Danielle Lipitzer that came from Cumberland. She is taking on Mathematics in Grade Five. We have Sarah Menard, who is a new pair of professional with us, and Nadia Moss, who is also a new teacher from URI doing Science and Social Studies in Grade Five. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. And next, I would like to introduce Chris Fiore, new himself, to introduce the other new people.
Thank you. If I could just have you guys join me up here. We'll try to get in front of the camera, please. I'm going to try to keep it brief. I'll give you a little glimpse into each person. We'll go by department. In the Ag Department, we have Matthew Pottle. And Matthew comes to us by way of the South Kingstown School District and Virginia, and he has prior work experience with Save the Bay and also as a zookeeper. In addition to Matt in the Ag Department and also teaching some science classes, we have Zach Sirowicz. Zach has several years of experience at the Compass Charter School, and he's a former college athlete, and he's looking to get into coaching with our students. Chuck Branchaud. Chuck brings a wealth of experience from Coventry High School, where he was former District Teacher of the Year. Our psychologist, Maddie Lucy. Maddie was at the high school at the, last year, completing her internship, and she did such a fantastic job that they kept her around so that she can continue to influence the students, so we're lucky to have her back. Terry Florio in Science. Terry has over 10 years' experience in education and comes to us from Johnston High School. Katie Jones in Social Studies. Katie comes by way of the Paul Cuffey School and also has international teaching experience in Lebanon, so she brings some experience to Social Studies. And Olivia Turkot in Social Studies as well. And Olivia's a recent college graduate. She finished last year doing a long-term subposition and is now in her first full year with us at the high school. Rachel Francis. Rachel is the job coach for the Narragansett Transition Academy. She has a degree in marketing, and she also joined us this summer as job coach for E S Y. So welcome, everybody, and thank you for your contribution so far. There were a couple people who asked me to send their regrets for not being able to be here tonight, either because of class or other work experiences. In Computer Science, Megan Clapp. In English, Deb Santagata. In Math, Rachel Franklin and Kerry Johnson. In Science, Jenna Larson. And in Special Education, Ricky Brown. Thank you.
So again, you know, we, our hiring process is that we So again, you know, we, our hiring process is that we do hire early in the spring. And so, you know, we were really pleased that such talented and qualified educators decided to apply to Narragansett. We go through a committee process where we have, you know, certainly colleagues, teachers, administrators, parents and students that are on the committees. They then recommend them forward and work through the process. So again, it was an incredibly competitive process. We're grateful they're all here, and they're already contributing to our district.
Thank you, Dr. Cummings. And I just want to say a sincere thank you for coming tonight. That means a lot to us. We absolutely know it's a very rigorous and competitive hiring process. And we know that when the recommendations to appoint you come to us, that, you know, there's very high expectations that have been set. And we see all your names in our consent agenda, but it means a lot for us, to us, that in the middle of the school day, in the busy time, you guys all took the time to come here tonight. That means a lot to us. So that being said, I am going to take a brief recess on the off chance you want to go home and prep your lessons for tomorrow. You're more than welcome to stay, but we're going to do like a two-minute recess just in case our new, our new hires would like to go home and start planning for tomorrow. So like a two-minute recess. Are we all set to resume? Okay. So we are back on track. It's now time for open forum. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Come on up and state your name, please.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Alicia Vignali Henry, and my address is 40 Lake Worth Avenue. So I just wanted to come here tonight because I know how hectic and crazy the first couple weeks of school are. And I know that that usually equates to making, like, to some chaos. And when that happens, you usually hear about things that are going wrong, as opposed to more about, you know, things that are going really well. So I just wanted to come and let you know that my two little girls, Gigi and Stella, have reported to me that they're having a wonderful new school year. And I, as a parent with so many changes going on in my life, could ask for nothing more. Narragansett Elementary School and Principal Wilson have communicated so many things with us. Everything comes through my email. And even though I was so late last night to parent night because I read the email wrong, I was able to go in and see what a beautiful classroom Ms. Suchet. She just had a welcoming and inclusive environment that Gigi is so excited to go and learn in every single day. Gigi, Stella, Stella's in kindergarten, and she comes home every day with a story to tell. She tells me what she learned. She tells me what she ate. She tells me what she looks forward to. So I feel like that there can be nothing more important going on. So we don't always, you know, get a chance to say those things. And I know that there's, nothing's ever going to be perfect. But I feel like if we look at things and say, "Let's see what we're doing right," that's really going to help us when we try to figure out all those solutions to things that aren't necessarily going the way we want them to. So thank you. Thank you, Narragansett Elementary School, and have a good night.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak for open forum? Come on up and please state your name.
Hi, I'm Robin Plaziac. I live up in Edgewater. I just have a question about the new schedule. And that is just in terms of when you're going to step back and see how well it's working or not. I don't have a kid affected by the new schedule in a negative way, but I have a friend who told me that her son has six PLTs next semester, and that just seems funky. So I just, I hope at some point you'll look at the schedule and make sure it's working.
Great, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak for open forum? All right. So we are moving on. It is now time for oral reports, starting with the school reports. So let's go elementary, then middle, then high school, then special services. So elementary school, please.
Hello again. So a couple things that are happening at our school. We've actually completed five out of the six back-to-school nights for our parents at Narragansett Elementary School. We host individual nights at each grade level, which allows the parents the opportunity to not feel rushed trying to get to several classrooms at several grades, especially if they have multiple children in our school. Each grade level hosts the families to learn about the nuances and specifics of that particular grade. The teachers have each put together a uniform PowerPoint that kind of outlines the curriculum, special projects that might be happening during the year, and just overall good quality of, you know, what our instruction looks like and what's different about each grade, because there are very specific things that happen. The teachers present that information, talk about learning goals, activities. And then I take a chance to talk to them before they go to the classrooms and just kind of highlight other things, like looking at the handbook and free and reduced lunch, and just bigger things in a captive audience, just to help parents kind of prepare themselves for the school year. It's like Mrs. Henry said, it is a beginning of the year, and it is, does get very busy. So I take the opportunity as a gentle reminder to parents of certain things that may have been coming home in backpacks and things, to kind of take a look at that. And we've had very positive feedback. It started during COVID, kind of separating people and not integrating people. And it's something that we really think we like to keep. It really, we have good feedback from parents and from teachers, so they're not as feeling as rushed in their presentations. We had Picture Day today, and kids looked, and staff looked great. Our first P T O event will be October 1st, Sundays on Sunday. If you'd like to come by between 2:00 and 4:00, or volunteer to scoop, we'd love to have you. And we have started our new use of all of our new E L A materials, the C K L A materials. And with that, our district instructional coach has been working with our teachers every Wednesday and/or Friday to help planning and really just looking at feedback and ways to make the best use of all the new materials that we have and make sure we're pacing it correctly for the students. So that is my report. Does anyone have any questions?
I just have a comment. Being a parent of two elementary students, I would like to piggyback on what Alicia said. The kids are having a fabulous time. They come home, they are happy, they are tired. But the thing that I, that I was most struck by being in the teacher's room, the two teachers, and all the teachers are wonderful there, but is that I think the kids are back to like normal stuff. You know, coming in, seeing their friends, and it's not, I think COVID is really leaving us. And I just want to, I want to give a shout out to the teachers and the staff because you know what? Sometimes we can get stuck in a mentality. It takes a little bit to get out. But to see the kids like that, like how maybe we were when we were younger, was pretty awesome. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, we're on to the peer school.
So it's great to have our peer school family back together and welcome new members to our school community. We are all adjusting to the new start of the school day and the nuances of a three-day rotating schedule. But the school day seems to be running smoothly, and students are having more and more opportunities to learn the skills they need to be successful at peer and ready for the challenges ahead of them. New courses such as Junior Mariners, Team Sports, and Peer Wellness help our school focus not only on the academics but the whole student. Additionally, more opportunities in Computer Science and Music throughout Grades Five through Eight allow students to more deeply explore some of their passions. We held our open house on Wednesday, September 13th, and it was very well attended. During the event, parents met with their child's core team teachers and learned more about the Unified Arts classes that support our students at peer. Prior to that time, we had a Power School and Schoolology Parent Forum led by our interim dean and Schoolology team member, Ryan Canisette. Information was shared with our parents about National Junior Honor Society, and we held our first community service opportunity at our open house. We had 11 student volunteers from Grade Eight that assisted parents as they navigated the halls at peer. We had our eye-ready testing go through the second week of school. We use this information to inform our decisions and supports. This annual diagnostic, along with classroom data and additional assessments, help us dipstick where students are and provide direction for supportive programmings that we consistently use to meet the individualized needs of our learning community. Athletics is underway at peer. MPS's cross-country and soccer teams have participated in their first meets, and we are off to a good start. Posting for extracurricular activities went out. We hope to get these after-school activities, such as homework club, robotics, art club, chess club, color guard, drum line, student council, up and running in early October. Along with these opportunities, we will be offering our late bus again this year. I had the chance to speak with Mr. DiPaolo today. And just as with last year's offering, students will have the opportunity to sign up for the late bus 24 hours in advance so that we can support that. Additionally, for our school community, we will be holding fall meetings for our school improvement team and P T O. While specific dates have not been set, I know this is a great opportunity to continue our partnership with parents and the Narragansett community at large. Also, parents should be receiving some information about our roller rollout. Our staff has been doing a lot of great work with that, thanks to our S E L coach, Karen Festa. So I would like to take the opportunity to thank our parents and staff for their help to set up our middle school, schoolers for success. I look forward to continuing all the great work with our learning community. That was a lot.
Thank you. Any questions for the peer school? Sure.
Could you elaborate a little bit on the content of the Junior Mariner course that you mentioned?
So the Junior Mariner Court course is a combination of a lot of different things. It's going to build in public speaking. It's going to have research component. As you move towards Grade Eight and you think about Narragansett History Day and National History Day, which has been something that we have had at the peer school for quite some time. It's an opportunity to integrate some of the technology standards that were required to have students participate in outside of the computer science realm, more about social media and how students should be responsible citizens through online citizenship.
And then just one other quick question. I wasn't aware that the elementary school was doing parent night by grade, and I was wondering if that's something that the middle school might pilot or think about.
So the way that we had our open house set up is that while one, five through six, is with their Unified Art teachers, seven and eight are with their core teams, so they have this opportunity to swap off. So parents can see a little bit of everything for the kids. I know sometimes it can be challenging, especially if you're just one parent with a couple of kids. I understand. But we really tried to build something that they would be able to kind of like dig in where they wanted to. Students came on with a schedule that kind of like went through their day, and students really were pretty successful, I would say. You know, our staff there felt that they were really heard, and the parents had really great questions. So it was a really good time. Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions for the peer school?
Just a comment of just how excited I was to hear about the Junior Mariner course, if I stated that correctly. Just how important and how difficult it is to be up here, you know, speaking to the public. Public speaking, delivering a presentation, you know, something that often gets valued with the senior project. But it's really wonderful to see that it's being implemented in earlier stages in development. And to see students becoming more civic-minded and engaged with the community and find the importance in serving the community, especially one that they are living in, I think is super important. So very, very happy to hear this and look forward to hearing more about how it progresses.
Jessica Rodriguez, who was our new hire here, she's in charge of that course, and she's been working very tightly with Vanessa Miller, who has a lot of experience with National History Day and Technology. So they're really building that curriculum to meet the needs of our kids and make them savvy and college and career-ready.
Excellent. Thank you.
Any other questions for the peer school? Thank you. On to the high school, please.
Good evening. The year has started off with energy, excitement, and enthusiasm. The students have been great getting to know them, and they're certainly getting a lot more comfortable and having more conversations. So I'm meeting with different groups of students a lot more frequently. So that's, that's been great. We are really hitting the ground running. Actually, tonight is the Senior Parent Night, which is a virtual meeting. So they're actually meeting right now, going over a lot of the college application process and things that they need to be aware of, and, you know, dates and things that they should be looking towards. Tomorrow is Back-to-School Night, where we have an abbreviated schedule, but parents will be able to kind of mimic their students' schedule and meet at least all of their core teachers, and then have an opportunity to meet other teachers as well. Friday is Picture Day. On Monday, we have our first Mariner Family Monday, which is something that we chose this year to work on student anxiety, stress, and family bonding. So we chose one Monday a month and designated as Mariner Family Monday. There's no homework on that day, so students, parents, staff, everyone can sort of pre-plan things that they might want to do. And we chose Mondays specifically because typically we look forward to the weekend, right? And, and the weekend is supposed to be our time to spend with family and to get the things done that we want to get done. And then you realize that your children typically have games in opposite directions at exactly the same time. And then you have to do all your errands that you thought you were going to do during the week that you didn't get to. And then, oh, by the way, the dog needs to go to the groomer, and grandma needs to go to the salon. So we just thought that that would be a great way to just really put that focus back on family and the strength of family. And they could plan a movie night or a game night, or just all sit down at the table to dinner at the same time, right? Because we know that doesn't really happen as much as we would want anymore. And it goes hand in hand with the Ruler Program that the district has adopted. And we had a cohort that trained over the summer. The teachers have already started their training, and we're going to incorporate the And we're going to incorporate the students and the parents as well. So anything that we could do to just kind of raise awareness for that, I think is very important for our students and families. Next week, we have our freshman Info Night. That's going to be another virtual experience. And we're going to continue our collaboration with the freshman parents. We met them a couple of weeks ago at orientation. And we gave their students a chance to sort of experience the high school a little bit. Now we're going to touch base again with the Info Night so we can just stay on top and see things that they might need help with and guide them as best we can. The World Language Department is celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month. So it started on the 15th. And every Friday, they play music as the students are entering the building. And then during announcements, they have some, you know, key announcements or people that they acknowledge during that time. The Ag program has been off to a very busy start. They've been showcased at the Big E. And they're getting ready to compete in Indianapolis next month. So we're really looking forward to all the great things that they're going to continue to do and the opportunities that our students really have. And this is something that's honestly award-winning and something that's really going to draw a lot of interest. We have so many students that want to take classes, even if they're not in the Ag program. They just want to be a part of it. It's that good. The grade levels are preparing for Homecoming and Spirit Week, which is in several weeks in October. But they're choosing their colors and their themes and, you know, getting excited about that whole process. And I did want to congratulate Aiden Flynn. Aiden Flynn has been recognized by the National Merit Scholar Program as a commended student. He's one of 50,000 out of the 1.5 million students who participated in the exam. So that's a great honor for him. So congratulations to Aiden.
Any questions for the high school?
Just a quick comment on Mariner Monday. I think it's an incredible addition to the high school as the chair of the Health and Wellness Committee or as one of the chairs of the Health and Wellness Committee. Certainly look forward to sharing this with the rest of the committee and invite you to every meeting. But to start off this month, we have a meeting. Our first meeting is on Monday. It's going to be here at 4 o'clock if you can make it. If not, would look forward to having further conversations with you about that. But it's such an incredible addition to, you know, just what seems like a regular routine of you wake up every morning, you go to school, you go home after athletics and do homework, and then you go back to bed. And it's like this stencil, this routine that you constantly do over and over and over. And it's very easy to overlook the importance of family and the amount of stress that is being put on students, families, teachers nowadays is at like an all-time high. So Mariner Monday is that opportunity to really take a step back and pause and take a breath, I think, really is going to be received really positively by all members in the Narragansett High School community. And I thank you as a former student. I would have loved to have had that opportunity in Narragansett to have had that moment where I can say, you know what, tonight? I don't have to do homework because it was never assigned. Not that I don't want to, but I don't have to. And again, I just really commend this addition and really look forward to hearing how it's received. Thank you.
Any other questions for the high school? Dan?
I have two quick questions. The Mariner Monday, is that going to be a pilot program for a certain length of time and then evaluated?
Absolutely. You know, it's something that we, again, for one Monday a month, you know, we kind of agreed upon a day that, and they were chosen very strategically, right? Like, so you have to look at the entire schedule rather than just plopping them down. Because otherwise, you get there and you're like, oh, but wait a minute. We have, you know, this coming up or this, so we need that time. So you really have to be mindful of how you do that and intentional with the planning. So again, we talked as a cabinet and the leadership team. And, you know, we meet all the time. And we're going to continue to look at that and see if that's something that we want to continue.
Is there any concern that by having no homework on Monday, it'll put too much pressure on homework on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday?
I think we've had enough discussion, at least so far. And that'll continue. That's something that's ongoing with the staff, you know, about the importance of homework, the authenticity of homework. And is homework really achieving the goals that they want to achieve? Or is it just some, and I, excuse me for saying archaic, but practice, that they just kind of fall into because that's what they were brought up with and they think they're supposed to do that? So it's part of, I think, changing the mindset of making sure that the work is not busy work and it's not here, just do 1 to 50, that what's the goal of making them do those questions? And what are they going to come back with? And how is that going to be used, you know, for future lessons? So that's all part of the plan. And it's all being worked into what we're doing at the high school.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions for the high school?
I do, just piggybacking on open forum. And also, we're going to hear a summary of a report from Maya, though I understand she had a soccer game today. Just, you know, how in your, I haven't heard much about the schedule in your report. I know new things, you have to gather a lot of information. I totally get that. I work at a school. We've changed schedules a million times. But I am curious, because you come from out of state and out of district, what kinds of information are you gathering now to maybe help affect change if change is needed in the schedule?
So I think it's been ongoing since I've gotten here, right? Because from the beginning, it's a little bit of a different schedule than I'm accustomed to because we had a kind of a nine-period day that, you know, was a 43-minute lesson. And a lot of schools in New York utilize that model. And we had also been looking and doing some data to see if we wanted to change and go to a block schedule. So it was sort of, it sort of came at a good time for me because then I was able to kind of branch the two. And so I'm trying to gather sort of like where we came from, where we're going, and put those pieces into the puzzle so that I can get a picture. And that's talking to everyone. You know, it's talking to students. I have loads of conversations with students, whether it's in the cafeteria, whether it's after school, you know, at a game, talking to parents and getting their feedback. So I think it's the collection, the data collection process to see exactly what's missing and to be quite honest, if something's missing. Because sometimes there are some, you know, pieces that people are willing to judge without really knowing the full picture and maybe understanding how it works. And then they start to realize, oh, okay, that's what that is. And then it kind of falls into place. So I think we have to kind of gather all the data and we have to kind of get through, I think, what some of the misconceptions are about it. And I'm not going to stand here and say that things can't be enhanced, right? I mean, that's what we do on a normal basis. So when you have something new, you would expect that to be the case as well. So, you know, if there's an opportunity maybe to put some classes in different spots that, you know, might provide a benefit, that's something that we need to look at. You know, there are a certain number of meeting times and that might need to change. That's something that we need to look at. Again, I have had, you know, I can't remember a situation so far where I've spoken to someone and we weren't able to resolve the situation, you know. Again, in any schedule, you're going to have classes that close, right? I mean, that's just the nature of it. So, you know, that's, I'd love to hire more staff. If we're willing to raise FTE, I will stand here on my head and I'll champion the cause. And, you know, we can add more sections and we're good to go. But that's usually not reality, you know what I'm saying? In the times of these, you know, tight budgets. So, you know, unfortunately, there are going to be times where somebody might need to take something next year, you know. And, but it's still there. It's still an opportunity to experience that. It might just not be the time that they really want to take it. And again, that's a learning experience, you know.
Any other questions for the high school? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Special Services.
Good evening. I am excited to share with you that after two years of planning, it was very hard to get on her schedule, Dr. Jessica Minahan came and spoke to our entire district during our PD day. In the morning, for two and a half hours, she met with our secondary, middle school, high school teachers and paraprofessionals. And then in the afternoon, she had our elementary preschool. Jessica is the author of The Behavior Code. And the title of her presentation were Practical Strategies to Reduce Anxiety in Challenging Behaviors in Our Students. Globally, the staff feedback was tremendously positive. And we're already working as a leadership team to see if we can have her come back and do an advanced session with our staff and work with some of our student support teams at each level school. We were also able to use grant funds to purchase 25 copies of her book for each school so that they can continue her work through book studies. And we were also able to get some grant money through our ARP grant to give each school some money to buy what we'll call or she calls cognitive distractors in how we help a student to change a channel and be able to reengage in their classroom work. So super excited about that opportunity. I know Alex and Jen are patiently waiting to find out about when we're going to have a special ed local advisory committee. And that is a parent-run organization. And at this time, we don't have one in place. However, I'm super excited to share that we have a parent who has stepped up and is excited about it. And actually, tonight is attending the Rhode Island Parent Information Network training for local advisor leaders. And I'm meeting with her on Monday. And then we hope to do some apparent session together to recruit other members. We'll let you know when that happens so that you can attend. So I'm hoping that by the end of this school year, I'll be able to tell you that we're active and we're up and running again. Each year, the Department of Education does a five-year visit with every district to look specifically at their special education programs and their compliance. So Narragansett was selected to go at the very beginning of the school year. We've already had our introductory meeting. Next week, they'll be here to review student files. They'll be interviewing parents. There is a survey that went out to our staff. They'll take all of that information plus information that we've been asked to provide them about different programs and services and data. And then from that, there'll be a final report. I would expect that I will have a draft in October. So I'll update you next month on where that is. Jill wanted me to share that as a district, each school has a team that is focused on de-escalation strategies. We use safety care in our district. And so by the end of this next month, all of our teams will be fully trained in up and running and refreshers. Most of our teams already have trained staff, but refreshers will be done and full training will be offered to anyone who's new on a team. She also says that within the next week, all three of our schools will have held their first multi-tiered system of support MTSS meeting to look at student data and make sure that the students that need to receive interventions are in place. And then the most important part of my report every time, I know, is always preschool. So Jill has given me the update that 72 out of our 75 seats in preschool are full. We intentionally leave a few seats open in case we have a student who's identified that requires special education or a student moves into our district. She wanted to share that the three-year-olds have transitioned very well. And actually, during our orientation for preschool, we didn't even make it to the first day. We had parents who were already requesting to increase their child from the three-day to the five-day program. And she's already getting people to contact, contacting her to enroll their child for next year's program. So these babies are still only two that they're looking to get on a list. So super excited about that. And I can answer any questions that you have.
My only question is, can you give an example of what you purchased, the cognitive thing to help the kids change the channel and get back on track?
So she spent a lot of time talking about when a student needs a break, right? They're distracted by their anxiety. That we often encourage them to draw or take a walk. But then that just gives them a moment to just continue with their anxiety or even think about it a little bit more deeply, right? So when they return, they're probably more anxious than they were when they left us. So what she said is if you give a student a trivia card, a Sudoku puzzle, you give them something that requires their brain to focus on something else, they can't do that and focus on their anxiety at the same time. So the anxiety will decrease.
Great, thank you. Does anyone else have any questions for Dr. Denton?
I do, I have a couple. So with the RIDE evaluation, when will that survey be going out to parents?
So they don't have a survey that goes out to parents. What they do is they look at our census and they select, I think they selected 12 students randomly based on age, school, race, and disability so that there is a variety represented. And then they give us that list. They pull those files and those are the parents they interact with. I have been told that they will send out a letter to those families, let them know that their child's file will be reviewed and that they will be contacted for input. The survey that they sent me was meant for teachers. They did not provide anything specifically for parents throughout the whole district. I think they probably used the SurveyWorks data for that piece.
Okay. I would love to see that SurveyWorks data. I know it's come out. So maybe in a future report, we can receive some of that information. Just out of curiosity, what forums and social media? Or will you be posting information about the special ed advisory?
Oh, absolutely. So in our district, we always work so closely with Lauren because she is our marketing guru. And so I'll create the information and then I'll work closely with her to make sure that that is shared out throughout our entire district. We have a way of sending out one email to every parent of a student who has an IEP so I can make sure all of those parents are involved. But certainly, a local advisory committee also is for all parents who are interested in working and supporting the education of students with disabilities in our, in Narragansett. So we'll make sure that information goes out. And I'll personally let both of you know when we're scheduling that to make sure you're available.
Okay. And just one last question. So you said that there were 72 kiddos in preschool currently and they are all Narragansett residents?
So, Dr. Cummings?
So the majority are. We do, the school committee passed a policy several years ago was on a space-available basis. Some students, I'm sorry, children of 10 employees or faculty are eligible to go on a tuition basis. And so no Narragansett children are kind of denied access. It's just we fill the class with employee children if that's a possibility. So I believe there's like maybe three or four this year?
Yeah, I can have Jill get you that information if that's of interest.
I'm just starting to see a little bit of a correlation between the kiddos that are going to preschool at private preschools and homeschooling. So, you know, just looking in the future of, you know, 72 divided by two because there's two years, what are student counts going to be? What other preschools are there? How are we marketing to them? Are they seeing the incentive? Is there a waitlist, that type of thing? Because I think we're all on the same page that, you know, the kiddos that are in Narragansett. We have a wonderful school district. So we really want them to be educated here if possible. So just gathering data, that kind of thing, it just piqued my curiosity.
One of the things I can share, and Dr. Cummings, if I don't get this completely right, because Jill does oversee our preschool, is that I know Jill, throughout the summer, continued to keep Dr. Cummings aware of our growing waitlist. And so normally, we hold about 10 seats, eight to 10 seats, for anticipating that students will be found eligible. Students will move in so that we don't have to worry about ever being over capacity. But after reviewing that list, reviewing the needs, Dr. Cummings and Jill made the decision, let's start calling families. So we've only left just three seats open, which may work out beautifully. It also means that we might come and tell you mid-year that we need another preschool teacher. So we'll kind of go with that. But I think Dr. Cummings shares, and Jill share, you know, and Mrs. Wilson, share that we want the residents of Narragansett to be able to attend our program. You know, when I talk to colleagues, kindergarten year can be really difficult. And it's very different here in Narragansett because so many of our students have already been in the school and they're so familiar. Jill will say they just kind of get off the bus and they go to class, even the four-year-olds, and you don't have to tell them where they're going. They were, even- They were, even during their orientation, they were just taking the hands of their moms and dads and showing them where their class was. And they're just little, little, little ones. So it's exciting. But we share, we share your opinion on that, that we want to make sure that if it's a Naragansett resident and they are interested in our program, that we make it available to them.
Any other questions for Dr. Denton?
Just a real quick, thank you for providing us with the update regarding the Special Education Advisory Committee. Very much look forward, hopefully, to having that come back. I know Josh and I, in the previous committee, really enjoyed the conversations that we were engaged with. And, you know, I don't think we can undersell the importance to point out that this is a parent-led committee. It has to be a parent-led committee. We can't have anyone here step up. It has to be a parent that steps up. And I'm really happy to hear that there is a parent who has taken the first step in this initiative. But there is definitely going to be recruitment involved in order for this to be a successful committee. So, as it's already been reiterated, that even if you're a parent who genuinely cares in, you know, education, please feel free to reach out to any of us and consider joining this very important committee. Thank you.
Great. Any other questions from Melissa? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we are moving along on to school committee reports. Who would like to go first?
I'll just jump right in real quick. I know the teachers are no longer here, but I just want to extend a warm welcome to all of the new teachers and staff, and thank you to each principal for your warm introductions of each of the new hires. Based on their accolades, it sounds like we are very lucky to have them here with us in Naragansett. Naragansett really is a proud family, a good support system. You know, I've had many teachers in Naragansett myself over the years. So really looking forward to hearing about how they progress throughout the year. And lastly, the Health and Wellness Committee will be meeting for the first time of the academic year. I believe it's in the large boardroom now. I think we got permission for the first time we are having an in-person meeting. It'll be here at the Town Hall this upcoming Monday, I believe it's at 4:00 PM. And I encourage all principals to reach out to your teachers, students, school nurses. We would love to see greater recruitment in the Health and Wellness Committee. It is such an important committee, and we value the feedback. And it only works when we hear directly from the teachers, nurses, and staff, students, about what's working and what's not, and ways in which we can improve. So really hope that we can build up the Health and Wellness Committee this year, and look forward to seeing new faces and seeing you on Monday at our first meeting.
Great, thank you. Does any other school committee members have a report to give? Oh, Diane?
The Policy Subcommittee met on September 14th to review the School Improvement Team Policy and to also develop the Threat Assessment Policy for the district. This is in response to a new state law that this policy is being developed. And we'll be voting on both later on in the meeting, and I'm sure Dr. Cummings will be giving an overview of each of the policies.
Thank you. So our next item is the student report. We have a student school committee liaison, Maya DeAngelis, and she is participating in a sporting event tonight, couldn't be here. So she submitted a written report. I'm happy to give a summary. So Maya reports that so far, the student bodies had a great opening to the school year. Students are excited about the new principal, and they are eagerly awaiting the fall activities. They're looking forward to fall sports, Spirit Week, and very excited about the opening of school. Maya shared some of her personal kind of experience and thought about the new schedule, and she said it's mixed reviews with the kids that she talked to. And I think it's, you know, we're on like day 14 of school, so I think people are trying to kind of figure it out and adjust to change. And we'll look forward to hearing more from the high school principal, you know, as we try to kind of get feedback from a larger student body. And then she mentioned her experience noticing, trying to figure out if some of the spaces are being shared as well. So I'm not sure about that. All right, so we're moving on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Cummings?
Great, thanks, Tammy. So you heard a lot of what I was going to say, you know, really came from the principal, so I'll just add on a few highlights. So we did have great PD days in addition to Dr. Minahan, who was really terrific. We had professional development in cybersecurity, so thanks to Giulio for setting that up. That's really a major issue for school districts right now. You know, I think you're seeing regularly in the news, districts being held for ransom, quite honestly, by cyber attacks. So we did some training there. We also did some hands-on training in Stop the Bleed. So that was, you know, thanks to Steve Gormley and Rhode Island Emergency Medical Services who did some hands-on work with our teachers in what to do should there be a catastrophic event. And that's not just for schools, that's a general training for life, and really heavily promoted by the Department of Health. So that was useful, got a lot of good feedback from our teachers on that. And we also did a lot of curriculum work and, of course, the work with Dr. Minahan. One of the highlights of those days is that we name and acknowledge our District Employee of the Year and District Teacher of the Year. And so this year, Laura Hoxsey, our peer school secretary, has been named District Employee of the Year, so we're very proud of her. And Tracy McCallig, our Dean of Students at the elementary school, has been named our District Teacher of the Year. So in both cases, the individuals are nominated by a peer or nominated by someone within the Naragansett school community. It's reviewed by a selection committee, and then they are honored at our opening convocation. And Tracy will be the faculty speaker for next year's convocation and will participate in the statewide Teacher of the Year program. So we're super proud of Tracy, and we'll have her to a future meeting to acknowledge that accomplishment. We'll have her and Laurie come. You know, great openings across the schools. Again, thank you to Steve and his crew, to Giulio and the tech department, to transportation for getting everything set up for a smooth opening. You know, we had some new bus routes in some areas, some different drivers in other areas went really smoothly. Schools look absolutely terrific, you know, the comments from faculty and staff with that, it was just truly amazing. You know, as you've heard, we have new schedules at the middle school and the high school. Those were developed all last year with a lot of input. As with any new program, there are going to be some growing pains, so we're addressing those on an ongoing basis. You know, I will say, I personally looked at every student's schedule at the high school and kind of worked with the high school to fix any holes or that type of thing. And Guidance has been doing a great job with that. Again, organizational learning, and I think the important thing to remember is that we do have strictures and guidelines from the state around curriculum and instruction that we have to switch our schedule in order to meet. And so as we go through this, you know, we have to keep those pieces in mind and also take feedback from faculty and staff and parents. The good news is that, you know, I've also spoken with many students who are saying that they've been able to access classes that before they weren't able to access, and have talked to teachers who are, you know, pretty excited that they're moving from, you know, about 85 lessons in a class to over 120. And so, you know, kind of depending on who you talk to, there are varying levels of kind of feedback and experience. And for us, you know, as Chris indicated, we're going to draw that in and make the fixes where we can and learn from it going forward. You know, finally, I just want to say, you know, our sports have kicked off, very exciting. And, you know, we are very proud of our student athletes, it's a big commitment, and we've had some early success. So I encourage people to look at our sports schedule right on the website. Those are there, and we have some upcoming music events also on the district calendar that I encourage people to go to.
Thank you. Any questions from the school committee for Pete?
And our new auditorium's open and running?
Thank you, Alex. That's only a minor thing, right? So the new auditorium, we had our convocation in there. It was absolutely beautiful. And so I look forward to having the committee and the public in the new auditorium. We are still waiting for the HVAC to be completed, and so we're able to use it, but that is the missing piece, supply chain issues, but it is coming and will be installed, I believe, in, is it October, right, Steve? Great, so we expect that in, in late October. Very exciting.
I will say, Pete sent me a couple pictures. It's unbelievable, like the aesthetics of it, how amazing it is. Lauren, can you email the school committee a couple pictures of the new auditorium so they can see the seats and everything? Looks very, very nice, very 21st century, looks really cool. Any other questions for Pete?
I just have a question, just, you know, looking over, I mean, I'm just wondering at the high school with the SCL in the classes, I mean, understanding that you're taking, Guidance is taking each schedule individually, but as a whole, I mean, what's sticking out to me in Maya's report is that she's saying that this is a big stressor for students, and I just want to make sure that they're getting the psychological support and the support that they need to, not only individually, but as a group, to kind of see it going into a positive change as you work out the kinks. And then the other, the other thing too, just curiosity, why are, why are we, why don't we have enough space at the high school?
We do have enough space at the high school. You know, at times, in any school, teachers have to share classrooms. That has not been the case always at Naragansett High School, but it has been the case sometimes for as long as I can remember. And so this year, teachers that may not have had to share before do have to share this year. So that's a change for some faculty members, but that doesn't make it necessarily new practice.
Is there space at the middle school for some classes to be held, seeing they're in such close vicinity?
The middle school, you know, it's not always appropriate to have the older kids kind of wandering the halls of the middle school. We could certainly take a look at that. But right now, every class has space. Every class, you know, does have a place. Where we have had a couple of bumps is because we decided to add on time to science to be a double period. There are some overlapping times where people need to use labs. And so rather than have a class be in a lab for a regular class rather than doing a lab, sometimes other science classes need to access that lab, which involves a shift. So it doesn't mean that they don't have space, it means that it's a shift that they might not have been accustomed to before.
So they're not doing an experiment at that time, so they're, they're learning concepts in a different space?
Correct.
Gotcha.
Okay. Any other questions for Pete?
I have a question for Steve. Where is that shipment coming from that it's taking so long?
It was an anticipated. It had.
All right. Any other questions for Pete? All right, thank you. All right, so we're moving on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation the superintendent to approve Consent Agenda Item CA1B, CA2A, CA2B, and CA2C?
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. On to the budget report, Karen?
Good evening. Expenditures for the two months ended August 31st, total $4,493,660, and that's 12.39% of our budget. Our expenditures and incomparances for the two months, total $28,741,697, and that is 79.27% of our budget.
Thank you, Karen. Any questions for Karen? All right, thank you. So we're moving on to school committee business. The first item, is there a motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and the Director of Finance Administration to approve the proposed tuition rates for NES, NPS, NHS, special education, and Jamestown for the FY 2324 school year?
So moved.
Discussion?
I have a question about the special ed, I mean, I feel like special ed's a category where you can't put a number on the situation of what you might need for what you might have that year. How exactly was that calculated? I see that there was, you know, some specifications from RIDE and stuff. If you could just explain that a little bit more to me, I guess.
One of the pages does have where I put the amount of the annual expenditures for special ed. It's based on the total amount of costs that go into special ed in that year of 2021, 2022. And then there's a student count that is provided to RIDE from our special ed department, and that's how we come up with that number. That's the best way we can do it, unless there's some other way that maybe Melissa could figure out a better way to do it, but that's the only way that we've, we've done it that way for the last, you know, 10 or 15 years.
So this is like that cost-per-pupil calculation we do for pretty much all of our students?
Yes, this is based on the expenditures for the year that we...
So while like individual students may vary, this is just the average?
Right, it's just the aggregate, and it's true. Each student has a different, an individual a different amount of cost. But this was a way to come up with a number, especially for our Jamestown students, who some of them are special needs and they don't, but they don't need the cost for the whole day. We do it on a block per, on a block basis for these students, or based on classes. So again, this is based on the total number that we have had audited and was agreed to with RIDE. So that's how we come up with these, this figure.
Melissa, could you give some, a little bit of insight?
So our agreement with Jamestown is a little bit different than our CTE students, where exactly what Karen's talking about quarterly, Alyssa from the finance department will ask me specifically what services and how much service time each Jamestown student has received. And then that, that information is used by the finance department. But additionally, we have an agreement with Jamestown. So if we had a student who had significant needs and required a one-on-one paraprofessional, Jamestown pays the cost for that one-on-one paraprofessional. So anything that we would consider an extraordinary cost, that wouldn't be part of our typical high school programming, we do have an agreement. I'm in very close communication with the Director of Student Services in Jamestown. She attends the meetings for all of her students in our district, and so she's part of that plan. And we do, we do bill and have a financial agreement for extraordinary costs.
So that's for Jamestown, but then how would it work for Naragansett if you're taking information from two years prior and you don't know maybe the needs for the upcoming year until enrollment happens? I'm just curious in the future to see a report, to see really, are those numbers way accurate? I mean, you're not necessarily going to get state funding, that's going to be, I believe the law states that's 80% back from special education. So I would just be curious to see how those numbers add up. I mean, is it pretty, are we close? Or are we losing money year after year? Are we, you know, foreshadowing higher? That would, that would be, come budget time, that might be an area where there could be an excess of money in which we wouldn't have to, in a situation where we might have to cut something. So I would think of like a special audit just to see like, you know, the last five or 10 years, like where that has really come up to be. I don't know. I mean, we must have kiddos in Naragansett that sometimes need a lot of services that might be more costly than the numbers I'm seeing here. Like quite, quite costly compared to the number I'm seeing per pupil here.
These tuition rates usually are paid by, say, another district. These tuition rates usually are paid by, say, another district or most likely a parent. We don't, most of our students are, are students, and they don't come from other districts, correct?
Right. So we have our CTE students that come in, and those CTE students, and it's primarily just our high school, those students, there's a set rate by the state. And then the Jamestown, we do bill by service quarterly and by any extraordinary costs. And so just double check me, Karen, the rate you are sharing with the school committee is if someone wanted to send their child to us and pay a tuition rate. But at the same time, that would go through Dr. Cummings, and we would look at what the needs of the student were before we would accept them at that tuition rate. That has been rarely done. I don't even know if it has been done in the time I've been here.
It's really an exception. So for example, we've had families say that are in eighth grade, that may move to an adjacent town. They are intending to send their child back to Narragansett for CTE from that town. They don't want to transition for eighth grade and then come back. In that case, they may pay tuition for eighth grade, for example. So there are some extraordinary circumstances, but as a general rule of thumb, you know, there are, I don't think any, maybe one tuition students currently, and that's from a situation similar to what I described.
I think I might be missing some information then. So none of the special ed kiddos from Jamestown go to North Kingstown?
No, some of them do. They go to both. They have a choice. It's not an application process or an interview. The eighth graders at Jamestown are able to select either, obviously, to go to a CTE program throughout the southern region like all students, or they can go to Jamestown, I mean, go to North Kingstown or Narragansett.
But Narragansett has more, more of an ability to educate them than a large district like North Kingstown. So maybe they, they make that decision more often?
Yeah, I think, I think from my experience in the three-plus years that I've been here, families choose Narragansett for different reasons. Sometimes it's for our CTE programs. Sometimes it's because we're smaller. And so I think there's lots of different reasons, sometimes because a sibling came. During the spring, I do a lot of Jamestown tours. Some of those families will ask to go on a personal tour and will review their child's needs, and then they'll do the same thing in North Kingstown, and then they'll make a decision between the two. So I think that that varies greatly. And then the only other thing that tuition-wise is, we do have two students right now from South Kingstown that attend our Transition Academy. So those are specific contracts with a tuition that Karen has worked, we worked together on looking at the costs of the job coaches and the teacher, and then we've come up with a comparable rate as if we were an out-of-district placement. And we've been in agreement and contract with SK each year that those students have attended. So I think we, we work really hard to look at the individual needs so that Karen and I will often say, you know, having students from another district should not have a negative impact on our Narragansett residents. But oftentimes, if I have a class that's really small, it does, you know, add other students to it. You know, we have a few students right now in our life skills program, which is pretty small, but they are from Jamestown, and so that adds a few more students. And we already have the teacher, so that works out well. And then they pay the additional cost for the extraordinary cost that might be associated with that child's IEP to make sure they have the supports that they need. All right? But I think Karen and I certainly can have a follow-up conversation on this.
Any other questions before we take our vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Onto item number two, is there a motion to accept the recommendation, the superintendent, to approve the 2324 virtual instruction day plan for the Narragansett school system?
So moved.
Discussion?
So I'll just introduce this by saying, this is the same plan we've had in place. And so RIDE does ask us to reapprove it every year and to review it and make any revisions. So Gail has done, you know, really a great job of kind of checking in with our principals to see if there are any adjustments that need to be made. Just as a reminder, our kind of, our local policy is that we really try not to go to virtual until it's becoming a burden in extending the school year in a way that it makes it kind of a little too long, gets to some unreasonable learning conditions. And so, you know, typically our rule of thumb is like, I think our policy says after three, we start to look to see whether it would be logical to do a virtual day. Again, part of our challenge is if there's a heavy snowstorm or a heavy storm and there's no power, you can't really do a virtual day. And so it's kind of your, you're walking that line before you go to a virtual day about whether everyone will have access to, access to the learning. So again, if you have any questions on the policy, you can ask Gail or ask me, but this is the same plan we've had in place.
Yeah, so this is plan, we still kind of keep the snow days. It's not for like one-off events, and this is more like if we experience kind of like a COVID-style crisis where it's multiple, like consecutive days that people can, in theory, work from.
Sure. Or if we have, for example, a storm day and, you know, a couple of storm days in the fall, and then you have a heavy snow winter, and your snow days are really adding up, and it's really getting to a point where the school year is getting extended and starting to impact family plans and those types of things.
Yeah.
Then, you know, we start to, A, for continuity of instruction, try to put in some virtual days so that we're not missing too many days, and B, trying to contain the school year within a reasonable timeframe.
I'm sorry, Justin, I couldn't hear 100% what you were saying about COVID. I do know that kids, if you do test positive for COVID, you have to quarantine.
Too much relevant to COVID. I was just saying like an extended period of school being closed down like a COVID crisis where power's still on, and then, you know, we're creating that to like a storm event or multiple winter days. So nothing about COVID.
Does this, in that case though, where kids are quarantined? They still receive schooling distance-wise in this way?
I don't know if it's in this plan, but this plan is for the whole school rather than individual students.
So just that policy? Okay. All right. Gotcha.
Any other questions?
Yeah, it's, sorry, just one additional comment. It's just, again, really important to point out like how wonderful it is as a district that we have such a thorough plan in place and that, you know, as evidenced with COVID, there are a lot of unforeseen circumstances, unplanned events that can throw you, throw you for a loop. And as a district, it's really reassuring to know that we are very well-prepared for these unplanned circumstances and that we have equitable plans in place for students to work remotely. And I think that's something that we can be thankful for as a town, as a district, that we are able to offer those services for students to be able to work and learn remotely.
I think the best example of where this policy shines is like when we had the elementary school have to be shut down for an extended period of time, and it was just the elementary school because the cable to the elementary school and only that in town was severed and not repaired in a reasonable fashion. That shouldn't happen anymore because we as a committee decided to upgrade the power capacity there for the emergency generator. But, so that's more of like a better example than COVID.
Any other questions?
I just have a comment. Since the RFP is named the virtual instruction day plan, and throughout the RFP's different sections, it's referred to in that way, I noticed that we basically use that same terminology through most of the plan, except for a few pages, page five through seven and page 11. We started using distance learning instead of virtual instruction, and they're probably virtually synonymous, but since the RFP refers to it as virtual instruction, I just wanted to suggest that we stay with that term throughout. And then there are just a few other edits that I'll share with you.
Any other questions? So there's a motion on the floor that we're going to vote on just with these grammatical and semantic kind of like edits. We'll include that.
Standardization.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Onto item number three, is there a motion to accept the recommendation, the superintendent, to approve the first read of the NSS threat assessment policy?
So moved.
Second. Discussion?
Steve's here to help if you have any questions, and I'll give you a quick overview. So this is a state-required policy, and having a threat assessment team is something that is best practice. We've had them in place in Narragansett at least since 2016, when I got here. And we do our training and we model our threat assessment teams on the Virginia Threat Assessment Protocol. And that is the gold standard. It is the only kind of evidence-backed and well-researched protocol, so it requires extensive training of our teams. So we are doing actually a refresher training on the 26th, right? Which is day two, day one is virtual. I am getting through my virtual training. I know everyone else and all the administrators are as well. And it really is a team approach. And the whole kind of idea behind this is that, you know, it is really intended to, A, identify when a student is in a place where they might act out in a, in a way that, you know, could be violent or could be harmful to others, to really create interventions for that student and to support that student and help them get to a better place. So as I said, we have a team at each school. The teams consist, and it's right in the policy, of teachers, mental health professionals, nurse administrator, school resource officer, and then they look at the available data. There's lots of training that goes with this, and then make a determination on the level of the threat that is going forward. Anything you want to add to that, Steve?
So this, this was, has been a plan, and we're just, it's, I was charged with facilitating it into a policy. So we've had a plan since Pete started, and, you know, it's just part of the school safety program, and the state now requires it to be a policy.
Any other questions for Steve or Pete?
Just in general, regarding the system-wide threat assessment oversight committee, who will that consist of? Just any comment on that?
Yeah, that's, so that's the executive team really. So that is Melissa with kind of her pieces, Steve, me, we draw in the police command staff when we need to do that, and really kind of use our resources within the town to do those pieces. And so we have a wonderful relationship with emergency services, police and fire within the town. They work with us really closely on any of these items that go forward. You know, one of the things that we're conscious of with these is confidentiality with students, and so, you know, we want to make sure that we are addressing the threat and also supporting that student and maintaining their confidentiality as best as we can as we go through that process.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. And our last business item tonight, is there a motion to accept the recommendation, the superintendent, to approve the first read of updates to the Narragansett school system school improvement team's policy?
So moved.
Second. Discussion?
This is, again, a state-required policy. So this was one where we've had in place and been working on these but haven't yet moved it to policy. So it's from the school reform laws that were passed just before COVID hit. And so each school has a school improvement team, and, you know, what the law dictates is the roles and responsibilities of that team, and then who should be on it. Narragansett already had a school improvement team process, policy and process, so this is just kind of tweaking that to fit the, the requirements of that law.
Any questions for Pete?
Does the school improvement team change every year?
So it does. It can. So essentially, it has to be parents, right? And so that is rotating as people serve and their students move on. So, so there is some regularity with some members, and it's really up to each principal how often they rotate that. Some principals kind of replace the whole team every year, or some people like to have some continuity with that and just replace a couple of members.
How do, how does, how do the principals then reach out to the public to see who's interested in this for equity reasons?
So it goes out in the newsletters. It should go out in the newsletters.
I don't know if I...
It probably didn't go out yet this year.
Oh, okay.
So it's, it's only the very beginning of school. They typically meet a little bit later into the fall.
Peter, these are like advisory committees? Do they have to submit like open meetings records or anything like that, or is this kind of?
I don't know the answer to that. I don't believe so.
Usually advisories don't have to.
Yes. And so essentially, the role of the committee is kind of what we're doing anyway, which is best practice, which is to give input and feedback and help design with the principal school improvement plan, budget, that type of thing, to really help the principal think through, okay, here's the data that we're looking at, let's think together about the implications of this data and what it might mean for our work as a school going forward.
Sounds good. And this is up to the principals. We don't have to like vote on these memberships or anything?
You do not.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 5-0. Are there any communications that anyone wants to mention? All right. So our next business meeting is October 18th at 7 o'clock. Is there a motion to adjourn at 8:29?